Damn, if we only had a Dunkin' Donuts in town.
You guys are all set. I'll just be right back.
Oh, okay. We're not on, right?
Yeah, it's just recording. He'll get it cut to the right size later.
Don't you guys have handouts?
Yeah, they're posted on the website.
It's a pretty interesting post.
We're all dying for handouts. Now, every... we all move forward, please, so.
Like hit by the lightning that's gonna hit you.
Pardon?
Hey, Prince Was Tiger, he lives on Hillville Road. Prince Was Tiger, he lives on Hillville Road.
Ryan said he's got a picture of some food.
Yeah, and they got some bread. Toast and bread. You can eat toast and bread, butter.
I want to get some broccoli in the box.
And there's eggs.
I have a toaster in my car.
Yeah, we could probably make that. Oh.
A foot?
Yeah.
Big foot?
Yeah. Oh. No?
Are you over here?
No, it's easy.
The wolf's got a...
Do you remember Shepard? You really? Do you really have no handouts?
That's all about, that's all about six and a quarter inches.
Nope. I think it was on the website.
Oh, that looks like a bear.
I called people before I came, and this is the best-kept secret in town.
It's been publicized in the website for twenty-eight days.
I called two or three people. I called people who are... I... one in particular, well, two of the three, I consider to be in the know. In other words, they always know what meeting is taking place, what the topics are at the meetings, whether it be Select Board, Department of Health, et cetera. I don't know, I didn't want to. What is that?
Been on the sidebar of the website since the first week in May as public hearings, and then it was in the Gardiner News twice, and all the details were on the... Well, but you know what you can do, Ken? Maybe it's a mix of...
It looks like a bear to me. Actually, because the reason I say that, I just... we were just out...
It was all raspberry. Very well dented.
No, that makes sense, too.
How many ones?
We were out riding somewhere, we saw a bear. It's... oh, like Dennis, or which of these?
Oh, yeah, okay. That wasn't far from where I was, I think.
Didn't see... Ben says it's a canine.
Bunker.
Somebody had their great dane up for a walk. Oh, it's also published in the warrant, too, Al. Everything we're talking about.
Not this.
This is?
Not this, because I looked... yeah, I looked at the warrant, and the warrant said that it was gonna be discussed, the town meeting for... I thought it was zoning issue. It made it sound like it was a zoning issue.
But the zoning bylaw is actually in the town warrant.
It has to be in the warrant.
All right.
So the article for the zoning bylaw, there's a warrant, but on the schedule back here, where it shows the Select Board meetings to review the ones that had to do with the bylaw change, that was in here, but the one for the...
Thank you.
But yeah, they were all in the warrant.
They're on the events calendar. The public hearing calendar.
It was on the public... It's a death zone.
I took that out because I got...
It's fresh.
Plus the year old.
On the...
Oh, okay. I didn't know you had done their...
No, I was... That's you?
Yep. Ken Daly just got his note that I sent him.
I just got yours.
Six thirty.
They got my reply.
I got it at six thirty.
I got your reply before I got his note.
Damn, I...
Already signed, thank you.
Oh, okay. How are you, Al?
Good, and how are you?
Good.
Yep. I called last month, but...
I'm on my property.
It was print. But then, I'd have to look at it. I don't want it.
It's got a red light on it.
Yeah, you're right. Which... who's property do they put it on?
The guy called me and wanted to put it up at the gravel pit. The Sprint was working to build out their network. I said, "That's great, we'd love to have them." What do I do with it? Everything is right on the website. Read the bylaw, bring in an application.
It would be approved, this Sprint, that wasn't rising. It would be approved right away.
Well, they cullate it. Okay, that was... And so we also have lots on Ragged Hill with the Select Board has put up our RFPs. We will put a cell tower up if you would like. We're welcome.
The chief of command will buy the lot.
Can I go through the ZDA?
No, no, special permit.
For a cell tower?
Yep.
Did that change?
No, that's what it's always been.
Very few things go directly to these, I guess.
Only forty of these spoke to you. And I know.
The rules are most of all, thirty-five days.
You came tonight because you have to take care of the kids and grandchildren.
We had two outcakes.
She's home, yeah.
Yeah.
But you said...
Yep. Those are the ones we had.
She said I was staying on... she said, "No, why don't you go instead?"
On Ragged Hill for...
Because I was gonna stay and give him his bath.
The second one wanted to go on, all right, on Comet Pond over on the Weinheims property. And we denied it because there was no fall zone, you know, right next to all the cottages. There was no place to put it. And I don't know if we appealed it to you or not. Maybe that's what you're thinking of.
I don't think so.
I mean, it was... nobody was...
I remember the one on Ragged Hill.
Yeah, nobody was against either one of them except for the fall zone on Comet Pond.
I thought at that time we had hired a cell tower consultant, my number. And they were to protect the town.
I'm all set. Thanks. Pardon?
You don't wanna sign it?
Bell Tower, Trips Tower. And go there. I don't know why, they wanted to do it, and then they...
Hi, Derek. Do you want to do a signing?
Oh, sure.
All right, now. Action.
I just need to ask, Mr. Dratchard something. Pardon me.
Hey, man.
Went up for a walk a couple months ago, weeks ago. Following up to the State Forest.
Oh, yeah? Oh, yeah. That's really nice out there. Really nice.
Do you want that?
Yep.
I work for him.
Almost knows.
Do you know him?
Yeah.
He was on two, three days a week. Pushed him. I worked there.
Did you wanna call the...
Well, the one West Boylston Drive.
Yeah.
Well, there's a couple of Rams, you know, McPean Newton was one.
Oh, I did.
McPean Newton was my boss's father. But they... he was almost...
I mean the one on West Boylston Street, right?
He was almost boys' street, too, but right across from the pawn shop and...
Yeah.
That's where I worked.
Neighborhood I grew up in.
Oh, yeah?
In fact, they have a picture of like, grammar school in the paper the other day with one of those, "Do you know where this is?" And West Boylston Street School is now an off-ramp for I-190. Right across from where you are.
Yep, yeah, right there. Funny, huh?
Yep, that lighting place, they mentioned that lighting place in the attic. I used to do a little Eckinggrin's Country Store or whatever it was.
Cozy Six.
Uh, that was gone. That was up the road, too, yep. That was my choruses. We ran Nix. Remember Nix?
Yep.
All right, folks. I think we're ready. We've got all the handouts. Anybody need a handout? We've got a couple extras. I'm gonna call a planning board meeting to order at 7:09 PM for the purpose of holding public hearings on the proposed bylaw changes. They will be discussed at the town meeting. I'm gonna begin by reading the notices. These were posted in the Gardiner News on the fourteenth and the twenty-first of May, and on the website, and at least two prominent places throughout town. The Hubbard's Planning Board will hold public hearings beginning at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, May 30th, 2018, in the Slate Building, the Senior Center. Seventeen Main Street, Hubbardston, to hear comments from the public on the proposed amendments to the Hubbard's zoning bylaws. The following amendments are proposed. Article eighteen, wireless communication facility. Amend section eighteen point six by changing a bond to a cash surety. Article twenty, use of large-scale solar photovoltaic installations. Amend the following sections. Section twenty point two definitions, twenty point two point four designated location, twenty point two point five large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation, section twenty point three general requirements, sections twenty point three point four site plan review, twenty point three point five site control, twenty point three point eight point two apparentant structures, twenty point three point ten point two land clearing, soil erosion, and habitat impacts. Section twenty point four certificate to generate, and adding a new section, twenty point five reporting requirements. Adding a new article to the bylaws. Article twenty-two, commercial marijuana establishments. Proposed zoning bylaw to define, regulate, and establish guidelines for operating a marijuana-related business in the town of Hubbardston. Amend zoning bylaws, article two definitions, and article four use regulations to reflect the adoption of article two. Copies of the current zoning bylaws and proposed changes are available for public inspection at the office of the town clerk during regular business hours. Ladies and gentlemen, Richard Chairman, Hubbard's Planning Board. So that's what we're gonna be listening to and talking about this evening. We're gonna set the rules as we always do, so that we'll ask the originators of the proposals, in this case, the planning board. We'll discuss the article as we come upon it with a brief or lengthy discussion, then open it up for questions and/or comments. And as always, we encourage you to speak your mind, because questions only give answers. If you have a comment, throw a con. We'd like to hear those as well. First of all, article eighteen, wireless communication facility. Amending section eighteen point six by changing the words "a bond" to "a cash surety." The reason for that is, after going through the solar photovoltaic bylaws over the years, we realized that bonds expire within a limited amount of time, typically about two years. They also are controlled by insurance companies. And if a cell tower's lifespan was twenty years, we may have a problem collecting a surety if we had to dispose of it or decommission it ourselves. So the best way we found is to get, instead of a bond, a cash surety for that decommissioning or any other problems we may have on a wireless communication facility or cell tower. Does anybody have any questions or any comments about that?
Can you... can you just read it for me?
Sure.
This says article eighteen, but that's article eighteen of the zoning bylaw.
I'm sorry.
It's not article eighteen.
That's correct. I'd be fine.
Where would we find it here?
Okay, give me a minute. Article eighteen does refer, in the hearing postings, to the zoning bylaws in town, so that's article eighteen of the zoning bylaw. We need an index to these books, Ryan.
What's the difference between a cash surety and changing a bond to a cash surety?
Well, we found, as we were doing the... The solar bylaws, that the bonds expire within two years, and they have to be renewed. And if they're not renewed, then the person who posts the bond doesn't have to comply with it. In addition, we found that the insurance companies generally are the holders of the bond. So rather than fight an insurance company twenty years down the road for something that may have or may not have expired, it would be easier to have the cash in the treasury for any situation that may develop.
So a cash is actually taking money from a developer.
Correct.
Thirty-five thousand dollars if it's a site, that's fair.
Yep, yep.
And that goes into an account.
Correct.
In the town.
Correct.
That's a big change for developers, because developers generally buy bonds, and they don't have to tie up thirty-five thousand dollars. They could pay five thousand dollars and get a bond.
Right.
So that's not... it's not gonna help anybody who's looking to develop at all.
Well, it doesn't apply to developers. It only applies to the developers of cell towers and/or solar farms. And those are typically multinational companies that own those. So it doesn't apply to any other development in town.
So they won't feel that they're being treated differently than all the other developers?
They may, but they certainly have... we've done this with five solar farms so far, and had no problems at all. We got the cash, certified funds.
The other question I had was, finance maybe will make a recommendation at town meeting? Is that just standard wording?
I...
Apparently, they don't rule on zoning bylaws, is that because of the financial...
I think so. I received a call from Susan Rain about that, and I think our discussion was after they published this. They're maybe making a recommendation at town meeting. But when I explained to her, she had no problem with it after that, so... Are they gonna make a recommendation? Do you know, Ryan?
In every instance where that was published, it's because they wanted to talk to the planning board or hear what was said at town meeting, and then would make a recommendation at town meeting. If it was still... they won't make a recommendation, they don't think they should. They wanted to keep it open in case they had comment.
Okay. I think it was a timing thing, too.
It was.
They just didn't have a chance to meet before it was published.
They were very clear. They went for or against... when they said that, they just needed more information.
Oh, yeah, I've not been able to turn it up.
I can't find it either.
Hi, there.
Mike Foley, Petrel Road. I'm just doing a quick bit of looking around online about the difference between a bond and a cash surety. And I don't see anywhere where things are referenced from a legal standpoint in just five minutes of looking, that it's usually a cash bond or a surety bond. So I'm wondering if the wording will pass Legal Buster. It might be worthwhile to have our lawyer look at that.
Well, it has already with the solar farms bylaw. We have that wording in the solar farm bylaw. It's not only been passed through town council, but also through Attorney General.
I just don't see it referenced as a cash surety. It's more of a cash bond. As opposed... and a surety would involve a bondsman, and you're only paying a certain amount. That's what I read, so... but if it's already passed, it'll be okay.
I'm sorry, I can't turn it up. The discussion on article eighteen, wireless communication facility, I cannot find the reference on the special town meeting. No, I'm... look through both.
Article six.
Article six in the special town meeting.
Ah, okay, then I overlook.
It's not...
Well, it's one, two, three. Four. Five. Coming up. Seven.
Second.
This page. Five. Six. Bottom of page thirteen of the special town meeting warrant.
Okay, thank you.
You asked where it was.
Oh, I've been here for... I've been here for like ten minutes.
That's fine.
Any other comments on article eighteen, wireless communication facility? All right, great. Let's move on then to article twenty, which is in the zoning bylaws, as article twenty. Use of large-scale solar photovoltaic installations. The proposed changes are in reaction to the, first of all, the citizens' initiative petition that was generated last year, as well as additional comments on article eight, article twenty in the zoning bylaws, to improve such. Article four. So let's reference it in the town meeting.
Article five, on page eleven.
Okay. Article five, page eleven. And we have changed twenty point two point four, and we've believed it cited as a right to be replaced with by special permit. It will now read, proposed reading, uh, large-scale solar photovoltaic installations may be cited by special permit in all zoning districts in the town of Hubbardston. We're changing twenty point two point five ground-mounted and deleting... I'm sorry, deleting ground-mounted, deleting and is not roof-mounted, and replaced with ore roof, and deleting the word mounted. Deleting and has a minimum capacity of two hundred fifty KW DC and replaced with solar panels covering twenty thousand square feet or more on one lot on minimum nameplate capacity of two hundred fifty KW DC. It's now going to read twenty point two point five large-scale solo... solar photovoltaic installation. A system that is structurally mounted underground, ore roof, with solar panels covering twenty thousand square feet or more on one lot on minimum nameplate capacity of two hundred fifty KW DC. The changes are designed to have more oversight by special permit for the citing of the different... in the different areas. And also to define the size of the systems based not on what they are producing, but based on the amount of land that they're going to be covering in case it becomes a situation where we need to screen or we need to pay attention to the size of a system. And we felt that a twenty thousand or a half-acre system is a good-sized system that should be following the screening guidelines that we proposed as well.
The other issue was that the two hundred fifty KW, the solar systems are changing, evolving, they're getting more productive per panel, so it wasn't... it wasn't just something that's gonna fit just that. That, if these new panels that they're talking about coming out, the two hundred fifty would be a really small system. We thought we'd keep both of them in there.
And on twenty point three with the general requirements, twenty point three point four, the site plan review, we're deleting ground-mounted, we're deleting two hundred fifty KW or larger or rated nameplate capacity. We're deleting the number three after the word article. And it's going to read, large-scale solar photovoltaic installation shall undergo site plan review by the site plan review authority as set forth in this section and article nine of the zoning bylaws prior to construction, installation, or lotification, as provided in this section. That's just basically a tightening up of the site plan review that we have had with eliminating the words ground-mounted, so if it covers twenty thousand square feet, whether it be rooftop or elevated panels over parking lots, we can cover it, we can look at it. And we can require a site plan review on that. Twenty point three point five, site control. The project proponent shall submit documentation of actual or prospective access and control of the project site sufficient to allow for construction and operation of the proposed solar photovoltaic installation. We're adding to that, any special permits... any special permit issued, that must be a title, under this section, shall include a condition stating the above requirement and further stating that, in accepting the special permit, the applicant and the owner grant the town permission to enter the property for the purpose of assessing and removing an abandoned or discontinued facility. This letter shall be signed and notarized by the applicant and the owner. In our decommissioning process, one thing we overlooked was the fact that we didn't have legal right to access a site. So we're adding this requirement, so that when they apply for the permit, they're giving the town the right to access the property if, in fact, the town has to use its decommissioning authority to take structures down. Twenty point three point eight, dimension and density requirements. Twenty point three point eight point two, apparentant structures. We're deleting existing section and replacing it with the following. To read, all apparentant structures to large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations shall be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures, lot area, setbacks, open space, parking and building coverage requirements. All such apparentant structures, including the not limited to equipment shelters, storage facilities, transformers, and substations, shall be architecturally compatible with each other. All structures shall be hidden from view whenever reasonable by vegetation and/or joined or clustered to avoid adverse physical impacts. All solar panels shall be screened from view by vegetation and in place prior... in place prior to issuing the certificate to generate for the system. Such screening shall be provided in the required setback areas where existing vegetation setbacks is insufficient for year-round screening. Screens shall consist of evergreen vegetation one and a half times the height of the highest solar panels. Terms or other methods to adequately screen the facility, depending on site-specific conditions, may be considered. Screens shall be maintained and replaced as necessary by the owner-operator of the solar energy system. Again, another attempt to make sure that the solar farms are not impacting anybody's vision or sight lines from their premises and their dwellings, and trying to keep them as hidden as possible. Twenty point three...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, on that one, then.
You wanna comment?
Yeah, I just have a comment on that. The... this wording on this, and this, what was the request for the citizens that did the petition? This is one of the things that they asked us to put in there, right? Lisa Durant and her...
Yes, they did that. That was a request from the citizens... That was a request from the citizens petition.
Just put that in there.
And so who is going to be enforcing this maintenance and replacement as necessary?
The inspections are done by the planning board and code enforcement officers should be the one in charge on all zoning enforcement.
We have such an officer?
Yes, we do.
The building inspector?
It's the building inspector, code enforcement officer. Under state law, he has that responsibility.
And when, when things have to be decommissioned, how do we have any idea how much that would cost? If the town was on the hook, so to speak, for decommissioning, because they're all different sizes, we would have no idea.
There's been a formula developed and it's been brought to us by Places Associates, who is our consultant. And they, I honestly don't know the background on the formula, but they have come up with it based on what other towns are collecting and what they feel would be a reasonable cost to take down these particular structures. And I think the least amount of money we have received so far has been $45,000. And we also have one for $125,000. So we do get a fair bit of money on it.
So where do we put that money? Is that in like a CD or something so we can gain interest on it so that when we do have to decommission these things, we have actually more money?
Well, the town accountant has control over it. It's in a special account. So it does go into a surety account, more like an escrow account than anything.
It's never going to be.
An escrow holdover account?
No, it's in the general account, special accounts for it.
So then some money could be taken from those accounts and from, moved into another account?
Oh, no. They're designated accounts. Go ahead.
There's a detailed estimate of the de-commissioning costs. How many pieces of metal, how many panels, how many wires, et cetera. And from that detailed list of scope of work, there's an estimate for each type of work and it comes up to a grand total. But that, of course, represents money that you would, that it would cost you in, say, 2017 or 2018. They then apply an escalation factor over 20 years at between two and two and a half percent, depending on the vintage of the solar system. The recent ones are two and a half percent. And that money, or that applica, that interest rate or escalation rate is applied to the 2018 amount and an amount exists then, or a calculation of the amount that would have to exist in 20 years hence, to take it all apart. They put that much money in the bank for us. And it goes to the town accounts in Unibank. And there are Department of Revenue laws about how you can invest it. So it can't be gambled away. It's a very conservative portfolio. And so the escalated value is put away today. Not, you're not counting on the escalation to occur over those years. It's actually put away at the higher value. So your hope is that the projections that you have today are going to remain static through 20 years. And there's, at the end of that 20th year, there's going to be no acceleration in disposal costs, no acceleration in wages, no acceleration in anything related to the dismantling of the solar panels.
No, we've included an escalating.
Right. But I'm saying, at the end of that 20 years, even, as you just noted.
Well, in some years, it's going to be less than two and a half percent.
In other years, maybe more.
Two and a half percent.
Correct. So at the end of that 20, your hope is that the money that you put aside meets your fit, meets your, your scale.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
And that's Department of Revenue regulating.
This has been a lot, there's been a tremendous amount of discussion about this and it's really an important thing because right now, the solar companies are saying, oh, you can recycle most of this stuff. And the cost to do it isn't going to be much because they'll do it. But Places Associates, as well as a lot of other people, and the people, the concerned citizens were very concerned about this because a lot of those things in there could be hazardous waste. Even if they're not hazardous waste now, maybe in the future, they're going to be hazardous waste. And how are we going to handle that? This is the best estimate we have. We also have to note that this is only going to be used if the developer doesn't do it himself and the building owner, or the property owner, doesn't do it. We're like the last, the last straw.
This is only if the property and/or the assets are abandoned.
Yes, exactly. So we, and we have, and the other thing you need to know about the ownership of this money, the town actually does not own it. The town is just holding, according to town treasurer or accountant. That is put into an escrow account under the name Social Security or O4 number of that individual corporation. And you'll see some more changes further down in here. The reason why we're changing the reporting every year is because what's happened now is several of these, these systems have been sold. So they, as a company, they will build it and then they sell it on the open market, the stock market. So prior to this, these changes, we're, we have to be able to track who the ownership is of that money. If the town doesn't own the money, we're just holding it and they can't take it out until they prove that it's.
I understand. I'm just asking because the 20-year projection makes a lot of assumptions on scale, on previous years, whether it be inflation, whether it be wage increases, et cetera. And as you noted, as you said, maybe 20 years hence, that's considered hazardous material. And all of a sudden, there's an additional cost to dismantle the silicon. And even though you've got the money and it's been getting you, it's been sitting there, it hasn't been touched, it's been getting you X percent per year, it could still fall way short, or it could be more than enough. We just really don't know.
It's so new, we don't know.
Correct. Regarding the hazardousness of the material, two things happen. As more and more solar systems come into existence, more and more solar systems will be recycled. So that process becomes more advanced. The other thing is the initial installation of the solar panels is, we can't demand it because as a planning board, we've encouraged the installer or people that actually buy the panels and put them in there. We want them to buy panels that are low polluting as compared to other panels. And the world has put out what they call a score sheet, a scorecard, on panels that are relatively clean and easy to recycle versus down the list, panels that are not clean and difficult to recycle. And we're pushing people up in the top half of that list.
Ed?
Just a couple of general questions, because I don't have the zoning bylaws next to me so I can't cross-reference. This says large-scale solar installations. Do we have a small-scale solar too, or just mean all of them?
We do have a small scale. And we defined it previously by the kilowatts that were produced, the 250 kilowatts. What we did was we were redefining that so that it takes up whatever size of land that it takes up, 20,000 square feet or greater. Now, the small scale does not need to come in for special permits, anything under the 250 and the 20,000.
Is that why it deleted cited as of right?
No, it's deleting the citing of right because it was a, a situation where the citing of right was qualified later on in the bylaw by areas and town that had to have a special permit. So what we decided to do was make it all consistent.
So it was like an overlay district that we used to have for solar?
We never had an overlay district, but we had that qualification. We had, solar farms were allowed by right in the town of Hubbardston, but in residential agricultural, it was needing a special permit. So we qualified it and made it all one.
So now, now it's an all zoning district. So if somebody wanted to put in a large-scale system, they could do so in the town district?
In the town senate district, yes.
So that's probably true.
With the special permit. It can go anywhere.
They're all by special permit, large or small, right?
Right.
No, small, no, small.
Small is not designated.
So anybody can, so that's any farmer or any household owner that wants to put one in their roof, those are the small.
Anything under, if this passes, anything under a half acre, you can put in without any permit at all. Well, either.
Do we have?
No, special.
No, special.
And when it says site plan review by the site plan review authority, is that the planning board?
Yes, under Article nine, that's how it's spelled out.
Why, oh, so that's a definition?
Correct.
Why wouldn't we just put it here, the planning board?
And it just goes along with what Article nine says, you know, site plan review authority.
What, knowing, knowing that one of the great concerns of probably everybody who's in Hubbardston, one of the reasons, one of the concerns would be keeping our rural nature and character. And the way this is, if I understand it correctly, anybody who has an acre or whatever, you could have, there's no limit on how many of these you can have. In other words, they're in any district and any piece of land that anybody wished could file a special permit and come forward. So we have no moratorium thoughts about this. It'll just be wide open, full or whatever.
Well, that's actually the way it is now, Ed.
It has been.
It has been, but it's based in state law. The state doesn't allow you to prevent someone from putting one in. The state says that you can't zone out solar farms.
Obly regulate is what they say, so yeah.
Well, you could have an overlay district, it makes sense.
Well, what, what we've done is used the special permits to the overlay district. And that's part of what's going on in these new proposals is to make sure that the system that may go in in your backyard is not hurting their neighbors and may need to be screened, but.
So we can have a limit on how many houses can be built in a year here, but we can't have any control of solar farms?
We do have some control because it's a special permit. A special permit requires four out of five votes for it to pass.
But, but as long as the planning board is willing to permit them.
That's correct. But the other half.
It's going to make these conditions.
How do you, how do you, how do you regulate, you know, how do you approve five and then decide you don't want to do the six, other than they don't fit the regulations or that? I mean, you can't just say, well, we think we've got too many now. Because if it's by right, it's not by right, but if it's by, you know, once you have the ability to do it by special permit, you could have 100 special permits come over.
Possibly. Now, there's a couple of other physical realities that also control these. Number one is departure. So you're eliminating any north-facing slopes, they just don't build them on that. The other topographical features that imply that you can't build one of these solar farms is also true. The second is the national grid limitation on the amount of generating that comes into the lines. So when a line fills up, there's no more going to be allowed on that particular stretch of transmission lines. Theoretically, you could have one in, excuse me? I was going to say theoretically, you could have one on in everybody's backyard. But in that case, that's why we're tightening up the screening and making sure that they become as invisible as possible. Now, to put this in perspective, right now, the five systems that we have encompass a little over 100 acres of land, one of which is 25 acres on a gravel site, so it's not affecting any forest areas. And that, the amount of acreage that it's taking up right now is one quarter of 1% of the town. And we don't look at that as a, as a big intrusive part of Hubbardston. Additionally, there's the other benefits that say every acre of a solar farm saves 156 acres, or is the equivalent of 156 acres of trees in their sequestration of carbon monoxide, dioxide, rather. So there are trade-offs. And I guess what the town has, has demonstrated in the past is they're willing to adopt the bylaw for solar power as alternative energy. And what we're trying to do here is modify it to make sure it becomes more acceptable, more in control, and less invasive as we can.
What happens if this upsets the property?
Then the bylaw.
Goes back to where it was.
Stays the same, correct.
I think every homeowner has to be concerned about their property value. And, you know, if I had a lovely home and there's vacant land next door, or, or even somebody who has a two-acre house lot can cover half of that two-acre house lot with panels, what does that do to the market values of the real estate on both sides? You should know that.
Well, actually, there hasn't been any data on that. It's fairly new to the market, so we don't have any data that sells you that it's going to affect your real estate values. So I don't have that data. It's been asserted at the hearing we had last year that it does affect it. We've had two sales in town next to photo, I mean, solar farms. The values were good in the sales, but I don't know.
So you don't see that as a detriment for a property owner that having a solar facility next to them would.
Well, this new bylaw addresses that. The new bylaw is stating that you have to have vegetation that you, that's one and a half times the height of the highest panel on it. So, and it has to be invisible. So if you own a property next to it, you wouldn't, if this bylaw.
No, in no, in no way, this is like when you used to buy a house with the electrical lines over the house and everybody was concerned about whatever raise those electrical lines give off.
LFEs, low frequency emissions in those days, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that used to be a big concern. You'd never buy a house next to the electrical lines. But these electrical lines are going from the field to the house.
They're also not generating 60,000 volts, so.
Yeah, they're not. 36,000.
They're, they're going under the ground until the edge of the property and then they go right into the existing transmission lines. But the purpose of all of this revision for this particular bylaw is to address some of the concerns you're mentioning, Ed. We're hoping it gets adopted because we feel it'll provide a lot more security for neighbors and for people who don't want them actually.
And will there be some fines for those who don't want to maintain the screening and replacing foliage that dies and that sort of thing?
Well, there's consequences. We don't have fines, but, and that's coming up. 20.4 on page 13 of your warrant, we have the revocation of the certificate to generate. They have to have a certificate to generate from us before they can put their power into the system. And that means a total review by not only our, our consultant, but by us, that everything is in compliance. When they get the certificate to generate, and also the approval to negotiate payment in lieu of taxes with the select board, when that happens, they can go into the system and start generating power. We have in that 20.4 version, we're proposing that we can revoke that certificate to generate for cause. We have that ability to review a special permit, to modify, rescind, or revoke a special permit. And this is a certificate that's very important, it goes against the deed of the property and will not be, it will be on it by national grid and they won't accept the power without that certificate from us. Now, we don't have any fines, but like I said, we have these consequences.
And the consequence is severe. You're opening the switch. His panel is sitting there not making any money for him until he is convinced that he has to correct the situation.
I'd just like to go on record, asking the planning board if they have any time to look at an overlay district for solar farms. It might make a lot more sense as long as we have all of the gravel pits that certainly are good opportunities for that. That you look at an overlay district so that there's plenty of, look at where all the vacant land is and that, and create an overlay district so that the property owner doesn't have to worry about having a large-scale system.
We actually looked at that, Ed. We looked at that, doing an overlay district. And just take for the gravel pits off of Pitching Hill Road. We'd love to see solar panels in there, but there's no room on the, on the grid for that. They won't allow it. National grid. They won't allow it, national grid. So if we wanted to do an overlay district like that, the town would have to pay national grid to come up with the areas in town that would be capable of, of accepting it. And if we did that, it would be thousands, tens of thousands of dollars to do this thing for national grid, if they'd even be willing to do it. Or we'd have to pay an outside consultant to do it, it would be tens of thousands of dollars to do that study. And then even once you've got the study done, who, who, how do you choose whose house you're gonna put it next to?
Just in closing, it just seems like there's not much protection for the, for the regular homeowner.
I think the point is, there's much more protection with this bylaw change than there is present.
Huge enough.
Maybe more protection, but maybe I would consider not adequate protection for how many, how many people sitting in this room would, would like to have a half acre solar farm next to it? And, and would they not think that that might affect the value of their property?
Well, you know, it's a choice. You know, but no, it's, it's a good question too, because we've had it asked many times. And we've, we've stated that the opportunity for the use of these solar farms comes in conflict with, with subdivisions, with senior residential. There's all types of things that could happen on somebody's land, and this is just another option. Even cell towers could happen on, if they're in the overlay district. So the, the question is, what is a better use of the land for the town? And this is one of those options that they have.
Thank you.
All right, let's get to the rest of this section. On twenty point three, point ten, point two, land clearing, soil erosion, and habitat impact, we are adding to that title, screening requirements. And we are deleting the existing section. I won't read what we're, we are deleting, but I will read what we're replacing it with, which goes to what you're mentioning, Ed, so that it's clear that we're working to keep it screened. Land clearing and natural vegetation shall be limited to what is necessary for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the solar energy systems, or otherwise prescribed by applicable laws, regulations, and bylaws. Existing vegetation shall remain in required setback areas except where such vegetation should, would shade the solar energy system. However, in no event shall, shall clearing of existing vegetation and setbacks exceed half the required setback width. Adequate erosion control measures shall be provided for all proposed land clearing. Section B, protection of natural resources and habitat, large scale ground mounted solar energy systems shall be designed to minimize impact to agricultural and environmental sensitive land and to be compatible with continued agricultural use of the land whenever possible. Accessed driveways shall be constructed to minimize grating, removal of stone walls or roadside trees, and to minimize impacts to environmental or historic resources. And C, screening buffering. Large scale ground mounted solar energy systems shall be screened year round from all adjoining properties in all zoning districts and from public and private ways. Screening will be in place prior to issuing the certificate to generate in all zoning districts. Such screening shall be provided in the required setback areas and where existing vegetation and setbacks is insufficient for year round screening purposes. The screen shall consist of dense evergreen vegetative screening, one and a half times the height of the highest solar panels. Terms or other methods to adequately screen the facility, depending on site specific conditions, may be considered. Screen shall be maintained and replaced as necessary by the owner, operator of the solar energy system. Twenty point four, certificate to generate. We are adding the planning board may revoke the certificate to generate for cause after a public hearing. And it's now going to read, no solar system facility, rather, may sell or distribute generator power until all conditions of the issued permit and requirements of this bylaw are approved and certified at a meeting of the planning board, and the certificate to generate is issued and recorded at the Woods County Registry of Deeds. The planning board may revoke the certificate to generate for cause after a public hearing. Now, that is a direct response to a situation we had where the solar facility operator actually went over the boundaries and cut trees in the butters' land. And we had, we had the butters in, and sadly, we had no ability to do much about that except advise them that they had legal repercussions, that they wanted to pursue it. So with, this is one of those with cause conditions that we can now use to have some oversight on the, the facility. Reporting requirements, twenty point five. This is in addition, the owner of the solar installations shall provide a report to the planning board in January of each calendar year with the following information, the total of, total amount of electricity generated, major amendments performed, planned or actual major system modifications, change of ownership, and changes to bond amounts. We, we're looking for more information from the system operators so we can keep on touch and keep on track with them as well. So that's the reason we're adding that. Any other questions or comments about this particular proposed amendment? Okay. Then the next one will be. Article twenty-two, adding a new article, commercial marijuana establishments, proposed zoning bylaw to find, regulate, and establish guidelines for operating marijuana related business in the town of Hubbardston. And that would be.
That's on page seventeen.
Seventeen.
And Article ten.
Article ten, thank you, Ed. Mine says twenty-two, but that? Article twenty-two would be in the bylaws. Article ten was in the one, correct. Thank you. So. Commercial marijuana establishments. Going into the zoning bylaws, this is Article twenty-two. The proposal is to add the entire bylaw, which is fairly new for everybody here, of course. I'm gonna turn it over to Tom, who has gone through the process and pretty much was the principal author of this article. And after a general description, then we can open it up to any particular questions.
Okay, this, this state passed in 2016, I think it was, referendum allowing marijuana to be sold commercially for risk for individual use in the state. Hubbardston voted 54% for it, and I forget what the negative was, but forty-one percent against. So the town was, is in the place that, I just wanna explain it. The marijuana is allowed in, to be sold in the town of Hubbardston right now, with or without this bylaw. We are going to, we were, we're required by the state law to allow people to sell it. We can regulate where it can be sold and how much can be sold and all those things, but we can't prevent it from being sold in town. So because the town of Hubbardston voted for the referendum, then the town has two, two options. If the town wanted to ban the sale of marijuana in town, they would have to pass a vote at the annual town meeting, and they would have to have a ballot question to prevent it. Otherwise, marijuana sales in Hubbardston are going to be a reality if anyone wants to open up a store. We were faced with, how do we wanna, how do we want to regulate this, this own this, to protect peoples and people's property? We started out with just putting it in, only in the commercial district, but we realized that there's a lot of entrepreneurial people in town, a lot of small farmers in town that might wanna be, have the opportunity to sell marijuana or grow marijuana for sale to start a business. So what we decided to do was to allow outdoor cultivation of marijuana from up to 5,000 square feet as a right, which means that anywhere in the, in any district in the town that if they had, if you wanted to grow 5,000 square feet of marijuana, you would be able to do it, you wouldn't need a special permit, you'd just need a permit from the cannabis commission and the board of selectmen. There's a whole process that they still have to go through. We figured if anything between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet in the residential district, that would still be allowed by a right, but you would have to go to a special permit process, because now you're getting into a little bit more area and a lot more, more of a commercial business. So anything above the 10,000 square feet of outdoor cultivation, as well as indoor cultivation, indoor sales, transportation, or all the other items that marijuana businesses are allowed, can only occur in the commercial district in town. So that's kind of the basis of what, what we did and why we did it. And there's a whole procedure, excuse me just one second, there's a whole procedure that we've laid out in the bylaw that tells people how they actually have to apply for a permit, but they have to do.
Which is the same as the state.
Same as the state.
We've, we've pretty much adopted the state.
Basically.
Processes.
So because this is a very important article and because it's something we, even the folks on the television will probably have a better understanding of, I'm gonna go through it section by section and we can discuss it as we go along, so that makes it.
Do we have a general question first?
If you'd like, sure, I thought, that's fine.
So this is approved by the planning board?
Correct.
So the planning board feels that the town of Hubbardston should grow and sell marijuana in any district in town?
No, I would say that town of Hubbardston actually voted to do that. We're just, we're just trying to regulate where it's being grown and sold in town, because that's what, the people of Hubbardston voted for it, they're the ones that asked for it.
So, so if somebody wished to not have that ability at town, they could amend this bylaw and, and that'd be a significant change.
You'd have to reverse it, not the vote, not the bylaw.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, you, right now, the way the law sits right as we sit here, if we do not pass this bylaw, someone could build 150,000 square foot marijuana facility in any property in this town 30 feet from a property line. That's what the state law says. So without any regulation, so if we don't pass this regulation, this, this, this new zoning bylaw, marijuana companies could do anything about it.
What happens if the planning board decided to put forth an article that said, yes, we don't think that's appropriate for Hubbardston, and you people get a chance to vote yes or no? And you can say that the people already did that.
That's right.
But the people of Hubbardston, all those voters did that, not the whole town of Hubbardston voted for that.
You gotta show up.
The people voted for it.
Right.
Well, you could do that as an initiative petition, Ed, if you wanted to do that. I mean, you could do a petition to do that, but you'd also have to petition the selectmen to put it on the, to build the warrant.
Yeah, it, it, my understanding is that if that would prevail at a meeting where that amendment was made, then it would have to go to a ballot afterwards.
Yeah, if that's, if that's what the procedure is.
Is that right, Ryan? You had it in your town, right?
And we heard it extensively at the town council, so as a yes town, it's considered a yes town because of that vote, any banning of marijuana would require an additional ballot question to ban it, to make it a no town in any particular area. So this bylaw change to be proposed by the planning board doesn't require a ballot because it's not banning marijuana, it is restricting it in certain ways, but not, not saying it can't be in town.
And I guess before we continue the discussion, I would like to qualify this by saying that the planning board made no value statement about whether it's right or wrong, or whether we endorsed the growing of marijuana. We simply, thanks to Tom's effort, more than anybody else, put together a regulatory bylaw that would at least protect the town as best as it could from just capricious growing and, and exploitation of the marijuana law that was passed by the state. We, we have no personal interest in this, in fact, I've never heard anybody express from this board whether or not they personally are in favor of it or not. So that, that basically is the setup that we have. And there may be better ways of going about it, but you know, this is what we've come up with.
The, the horses, the horses left the barn, we just gotta keep them in the stalls, you know, on the farm.
It's gotta be interesting.
I mean, I think in the next five years, things are gonna change a lot in the marijuana industry.
Other towns have banned it.
What's that?
Other towns have banned it, you know.
It sounds like you have to bring it through a vote to do that.
And I'd go on record as a, as a parent of three children and a grandfather of seven children, saying that I don't think this is a good thing for the town of Hubbardston to do for its young people. And I think that people with addictive behaviors can use this as a starting place. And I think that we will see more drug consumption in our, in our town than ever before.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, by the way.
A year and a half ago. That's not.
Wait, wait, he's, it's not gonna debate that, that's, that's state conditions on record for it.
I agree with, I agree with you 100%.
And Mike, you wanted to make a.
Oh, I, I, I don't disagree with you at all. It's, but, you know, the people voted and we have to go through whatever steps are necessary to convince them otherwise.
And, and this is exactly the situation.
That's not, that doesn't happen here, right?
No, and this is the situation we're in right now. This is the proposal that we have for the town to regulate the state law.
Yeah, I have to run.
Okay, so, let's go through this. Twenty-two point one, purpose. Purpose of this bylaw is to ensure safe access to growing, distribution, and sale of marijuana in the town of Hubbardston. No marijuana establishment shall impinge on any property owners' right to freedom of noise, odor, light pollution, or to the natural scenic, historic, and aesthetic qualities of their property. I'm just gonna keep reading till somebody has a reason to stop me and ask a question or make a comment.
Has anybody ever been next to a pot farm?
Nope, not me. You?
Smell pretty bad. So this little thing about where, you know, if you have one next door to you, but you have the right to have free odor, you know, not have odor, not have noise, I guess I don't quite see how that really fits.
Well, how much odor does 5,000 square feet generate?
I don't know how you could measure. I mean, I guess it's kinda like, you know, being next to a cow farm where they just spread fresh manure. I mean, does it bother one person and doesn't bother the next? I mean, really? But it sorta seems like, like you may have the right to grow, but the person who's being grown next to kinda lost their rights.
But what if the state regulations, they're gonna have to read in a document too, if you have to do that?
But that's true of chicken farms and pig farms and your manure analogy, it goes on and on.
It does.
One neighbor can impact.
Well, that's why we've limited it to the 5,000 square feet. If we prevent, if we banned it in all residential districts, we would've had to go to the ballot. Which, right, right, that's, that's what the jury says, so. It's really, really important that we get at least a minimal zoning in place. So with 5,000 square feet, someone wants to do that, hey, they can do it by right. If it's a real problem, we'll have to address it down the line.
But once it's already been established, how are you going to revoke somebody's?
The other thing they have to do, Debbie, which I've been, is gonna be getting to in a minute, there's a whole procedure that these people have to follow.
Yeah.
Okay, they have to go to the cannabis commission, they have to go to the select boards, they have to do this thing called a host agreement. There's, there's a whole lot of other hoops.
Right.
To do that. Is it gonna be worth it for someone under 5,000 or even 10,000 square feet to do that? I, I don't know. No one, no one really knows.
Right.
That's what I was saying earlier.
Yeah.
In the next five years, I think we're gonna learn a lot and we're gonna be able to change this bylaw or add something to the bylaw, depending on what happens in the state. No one really knows. I think Ryan has done a lot of work on it as well. We've, I've been to three meetings with the attorney general and she keeps saying, I don't know, I don't know, the courts will have to decide, so.
Does the, does the town's right to farm ordinance have any impact on your decision here?
No, the right to farm bylaw doesn't really come into effect with this. The people have a right to do it on any, in any area of town. The state has prevented, in the, in the general law, the state has said farming is not. No, they, they did redefine that. It doesn't have the protection of, zoning protection that agriculture has. So we wanted to ban a, a chicken facility next to your house, okay? The right to farm bylaw says we can't, we don't have the right to do that. We do, what this law says, we do have the right to stop it going into certain areas, like large scale places like that. Where if it was like, well, Countryhand is the perfect example. When they went for their building permit, this big massive facility, the town zoning When they went for their building permit, this big massive facility, the town zoning, we can't prevent them from doing it because it's an act of, that's what the right to farm and actually it's in state law anyways. But they don't, this marijuana law does not have the protection of the farming laws of the right to farm bylaw. But they do give us the ability to control it through zoning.
Definitions, 22.2. All definitions of Mass. General Law Chapter 94G, Section 1, definitions in 935 CMR 500, adult use of marijuana, Section 500.002, definitions are made part of this bylaw. General requirements, Section 22.3. All marijuana establishments including cultivating, retail sale, product manufacturing, independent testing laboratory, or any other type of marijuana type establishment shall be in accordance with Massachusetts General Law 94G, 935 CMR 500, adult use marijuana. The planning board shall permit, shall be the permit granting authority. The enforcement authority of this bylaw shall be the building inspector and/or planning board. 22.4, general zoning districts for marijuana establishment. Marijuana establishments as described in Mass. General Law 94G and 935 CMR 500 shall be allowed in the following districts after the applicant has been approved by the Cannabis Control Commission. 22.4.1, marijuana establishment allowed by right residential district. Outdoor marijuana cultivation establishments licensed for tier one, which is up to 5,000 square feet. 22.4.2, marijuana establishment allowed by special permit residential district. Outdoor marijuana cultivation establishments licensed for tier two, between 5,001 and 10,000 square feet by special permit. 22.4.3, let me finish the section. Marijuana establishment allowed by special permit in the town center district up to a marijuana cultivation establishment licensed for tier one up to 5,000 square feet by special permit. 22.4, marijuana establishment allowed in the commercial district by special permit. All marijuana establishments as defined by Mass. General Law 94G are allowed by special permit. Those are the general zoning districts and for use of marijuana.
Has the Cannabis Control Commission been defined by the town? In other words, how many members of the board, length of term, how many similar requirements that you guys have?
We don't have one. We're referencing the State Cannabis Control Commission.
So we, so the town, conceivably, then we would have to establish one?
No, no. The Cannabis Control Commission is set out in state law. The governor has appointed these people to the Cannabis Control Commission, which controls the sale of all marijuana in the state.
Who would regulate, if they, if they met all the requirements of the planning board, who would then regulate them while they were here in the town?
The way it works is that they have to come to the select board, the, the select board and planning board to introduce the product, project to us.
Right.
After they do that, they have to go to the select board and enter into what is a host agreement. Which means the select board discusses the project with them and they can get up to 3% of their annual sales as a, as a.
Tax.
Tax. It's not a tax, it's an incentive for them to be able to do it. After they've done that, they have to apply to the Cannabis Control Commission in Boston. Okay, there's an application fee, which is quite expensive. Huge amount of work for them to do. After the Cannabis Control Commission looks at it and they say, yeah, this is a feasible project, it comes back to the town of Hubbardston, okay? And then it goes through the special permit process.
Once it gets established in the town, who regulates it?
The Cannabis Control Commission will regulate it.
So at that point, the town has no, nothing really to say about it?
Well, the bylaw is regulated under 22.3 general requirements by the building inspector and the planning board. That's what the 22.3 says.
You're right, Al, but there's 71 pages of regulations that these people have to do, have to.
Meet it.
To meet.
Right.
And there's a huge amount of security regulations. This has been, I talked to the police chief about this and he, he feels that the security requirements that are involved in the regulations will be sufficient for him to police it properly.
Those are state regulations.
Those are state regulations. So we're relying, we are relying on the state to regulate this, you know, for a question around it, but they, they're pretty strict about what they're doing. So I mean, this is all gonna, no, no one knows. There hasn't even been one opened yet.
So if people believed they were in violation of Mass. General Law, then the select board would have to go back to the commission to file a complaint?
No, the select board is not mentioned at all in this bylaw.
So they would cut it.
Not your bylaw, I'm talking about the commission, general law, Mass. General Law. I'm assuming the select board would be the ones, since they're the governing body of the town, that they would be the ones to somehow reach out to the state and say, we perceive or we believe that a violation is taking place.
No. Under this, 22.3, the general requirements, the enforcement authority of this bylaw shall be the building inspector and/or planning board. So the select board would not get involved in that. If there's a violation, there's two things we're talking about.
There's two, two levels of enforcement.
We're talking about the bylaw that regulates it in the town of Hubbardston.
Correct.
And the state regulations supersede what we have. We can't make it any less than what the state has offered. We can make it more restrictive. And we are making it more restrictive with this bylaw.
But once they're in, once they're established, they've met all your criteria, if at that point, after being established, it's believed that they're in violation for whatever reason, because they've met all your planning requirements, whether it be setbacks, whether it be hours of distribution, whether it be locks, keys, safety, et cetera, who would then file, if there was, if there was a problem, I'm assuming it would be the select board that would actually have to file some type of complaint to the commission?
I don't know the answer. I'll find out. I'll have that for the town meeting.
If that, if that is on a statewide level, and I, I think the only violation would probably be criminal, that the town would be, if they're violating the bylaw, then that's the building inspector and the planning board. If it's a criminal complaint, the police have the authority to investigate and make charges as well, under the auspices of the select board. And, you know, any, anything that they're doing in the town would generally fall under this bylaw.
That's a good question, Al. I mean, that's, I don't know the answer to that. So basically, your, your question is if these, if a facility violates the regulations.
Right.
And if citizens, if they're violating this regulation.
Correct.
Who enforces that and what's the mechanism to do that?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's a fair question. That's a good question. I think the police chief is, but the Cannabis, Cannabis Commission, if you read, if you read the regulations, these people have to report almost, I think, every month of their sales. They have to have all these security protocols. If you look at the regulations, it's just enormous. And the Cannabis Commission has complete control of these people's business. So they, they really will know what's going on. Supposedly, but they, no, no one really knows. You know, is someone selling it, say, say if they're, with this outdoor cultivation, if you're, you grow 5,000 square feet, you know, you get, say, I don't know how many, couple hundred or 100 pounds or even just one pound of marijuana, you can't sell that retail to anyone, according to the Cannabis Commission. You can't sell it to anyone. You have to hire a transportation company to transport it from there to a facility that will test it. And then that, after that, it gets sold to a wholesaler only. And that wholesaler is only allowed to sell to retail, retail establishments. So before it even gets to be sold as a retail establishment, the grower has to have it transported by someone that's licensed, which is a separate license. It has to be tested and then it has to go transported back to a retailer. So if all these regulations, it's really horrendous for protection.
And who, who enforces those regulations when you have all this growing happening in people's backyards?
I, I, well, the police would, the police would definitely, if they're selling this out of someone's backyard, the police, no, they're not allowed to do that. They're the ones that would enforce that. But general like regulations about are they transporting it, it's just like any other law.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Any other state law, who, who, who enforces any state law?
I also believe they're gonna be establishing a commission much like the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission to regulate this as well.
So the other thing is this can't be within 500 feet of a school or educational facility or a playground or childcare, any sort of childcare facility?
That's under state law.
That's state law.
Okay, 22.5, procedure for obtaining any marijuana establishment licenses. 22.5.1, conducting community outreach hearing. 22.5.1.1, the planning board will hold a joint community outreach hearing with Hubbardston Board of Selectmen. All costs associated with this hearing shall be paid for by the applicant. 22.5.1.2, the outreach hearing shall be advertised twice in 14 days prior to the hearing and the Gardener notice is posted on the town website. 22.5.1.3, copy of the notice filed with the town clerk, planning board, Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, building inspector, and police chief. 22.5.1.4, copy of hearing notices must be sent to a butters within 300 feet of the proposed marijuana establishment by registered lands. 22.5.1.5, the content of the hearing shall include discussion of type of marijuana establishment relocated, security information, steps taken by applicant to prevent diversion to minors, plan for positive community impact, information to demonstrate location will not be a nuisance. 22.5.1.6, the applicant is required to answer questions from the community members. So Tom, why don't you tell us about outreach, community, community outreach hearings? That's another facet of this from the state.
Every, every one person that has, any person that wants to open up any type of marijuana establishment has to have an outreach meeting with the planning board, select board, and like the public, and they have to answer questions about what they're gonna do. That's the one, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then they have to enter into the host agreement with the select board. What's not in these bylaws is the select board have not put any mechanism into taxing, taxing marijuana sales. And yeah, so, that's something the select board will probably address. Did you say, Ryan, Ryan? Are you gonna address that in the fall town meeting?
I'm sorry, I was reading cannabis bylaw.
Yeah. The, the select board are in charge of taxing, taxing the sale of marijuana, they can do it up to 3%.
Yeah, so.
They have to have, they have to pass, that passes the pass at a town meeting.
You must accept a local sales tax option when they collect 3%.
Right.
So the town meeting would have to adopt the collection of the 3%, up to 3% sales tax, and then those can be imposed as part of the host agreement.
Right. So the select board would.
Propose it for, or allow it in the fall for town meeting and then.
But you're gonna, could, could you put that in the, the fall town meeting if they had one?
If, depending on how it's voted.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, they should anyways.
Sure.
Regardless of whether this passes or not, because they, then they can tax it.
Yeah, if it doesn't pass, they can still put one in.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions on 22.5? 22.5.2, enter into host community agreement, HCA. After the hearing, the applicant shall make application to the Board of Selectmen for a host community agreement with the town Hubbardston. The HCA will follow Mass. General Law 94G and 935 CMR 500, adult use of marijuana. 22.5.3, certify compliance with local zoning, including buffer zone requirement. After the host agreement has been executed between the Board of Selectmen, this applicant will meet with the planning board to review a general site plan to show that the proposal conforms to the zoning and buffer zone requirements. If the zoning and buffer zone requirements are in compliance with the town Hubbardston zoning and planning board, the planning board will vote to send a letter to the Cannabis Control Commission that the proposed marijuana establishment is in compliance with zoning and buffer zone requirement. We have to confirm to Cannabis Control Commission that whomever is applying for these licenses is doing it the way we also want it and the way they want it.
And what are the buffer zone requirements? 300 feet, is that what you're saying?
Well, 500 feet from a school or a.
childcare or whatever.
But say someone wanted to put a 20,000 square foot facility in residential zone, well, that's not allowed. So we would say that's not allowed. But if someone says, I want to put a 5,000 square foot facility in any property in town, and it's not within 500 feet of a playground or a school or any childcare facility, then we're basically just confirming that the site that they want to put it at is correct.
So the only buffer zone is for children, keeping it away 500 feet from the.
Yes.
22.6, final approval. After the Cannabis Control Commission has contacted the town that the application is complete, the applicant, if required by zoning, must apply to the planning board for a special permit for marijuana establishment for Article 789 and 21 of the Hubbardston zoning bylaw. That should actually be 22, if I make that correction.
Then there's one more question, I'm sorry, about that, the buffer zone. So if somebody next door to me wanted to grow 5,000 square feet, it could go right up to my property line because there's no setback?
30 feet, there's 30 foot setback.
30 feet, okay.
And they have to put a fence around it.
Okay.
And have security cameras.
Any other questions on the proposed marijuana bylaw? It's, seems to be a fairly good way to start this off anyway. Ryan?
So I encourage people to read up on this. It's very difficult. I went to a meeting with Tom and I know Tom's read through and done a ton of this. This is from the Cannabis Control Commission Guidance to Municipalities. So in terms of their, their authority, Cannabis Commission, they can revoke, suspend any type of licenses. They have the authority and the ability to inspect premises and any violations that were being discussed, they can refer it to state, federal, and local law as necessary. And it also talks about municipal control of the licensing and permitting process, which is anything that has to do with the bylaws that we said. So there is a need to the Cannabis Commission. They do have the ability to pull the license, which would be the whole reason for selling. Without that license, it would be, wouldn't be a usable business, so there is some of that. But again, it's not been tested, we haven't seen, so we don't know.
We don't really know.
Al, do we conform with the law if we, if we regionalize placement of a facility? In other words, we regionalize our dispatch service, there has been talk about regionalizing DPW services between us and other towns surrounding us. Could an agreement be reached with, for example, Berry or Gardner, where Hubbardston said, we would like to regionalize with you and just say, we're gonna conform, but we're gonna regionalize it and allow you to place it in your facility or your town?
Not, not under this, Al. This is a zoning bylaw specific to us. I do not know of any regional zoning sharing of bylaws. General law, Mass. General Law is basically what encompasses all of that. But if a proposed project comes in and says, we want to put it on the Hubbardston-Berry town line, 50 and Hubbardston, 50 and Berry, that would require two towns approving that type of a proposal. But in terms of regionalizing, we're not gonna regionalize our zoning bylaws with another town. Every zoning bylaw is.
How about the facility itself?
The facility, if we ban it, if we ban it in town, it has to go to the vote. If we don't wanna, so originally, the original draft of this was to, to ban it, ban it in residential districts. We told, like, attorneys, you need a vote, you need to vote at the town meeting and you need a ballot vote. What we're really worried about is not having any zoning whatsoever. And if we, if we vote to ban anything, we have to go to the ballot. So we, yeah, we'll probably win at the town meeting, but if we lose at the ballot, then we have nothing. So I mean, it's better to, I think, do a little bit, see where we go with it, and then try to refine it as, as time goes on.
Yeah, I understand that. And I understand it with your, with efforts you guys are putting out and the time spent on that. I'm just saying that with the town administrator, for example, if he were to work in conjunction with select boards or other boards, whether it be Hardwick, Berry, or Gardner, does the law allow for a regionalization of one facility working in that general area like we have with the school district? We have a regional school district. Everybody. Everybody feeds into that, so if you have one place.
So it's a good question, but these are for commercial businesses? So the, the town isn't in, wouldn't be able to get into the marijuana growing business, just like we can't do a chicken farm or the like. So it's not something that we could regionalize, 'cause we can't regionalize businesses.
This is private enterprise.
We can regionalize a school.
We can control, this is the control and the regulation of a private enterprise under the marijuana general mass law.
That does, it's just not allowed by state law. Every town is individual. It'd be nice if it was like countywide or something like that, but.
But if, like I said, if a business came in and said, we have property in Barry and Hubbardston, we need licenses, basically, from both towns for that thing.
Do we know what Barry's doing?
I think they banned it, if I understand. I'm not sure.
I mean, I agree 100% with that plan, and I'm not personally, I don't think it should, I didn't vote for it, and the people in town voted for it, so.
Once it's voted for, you have your choice. Let it go unregulated or regulated. And we're doing our best to regulate.
I, I received one other comment by mail on this article, so I'm gonna read that into the record, from James M. Pitney, 52 Barry Road, Hubbardston, Mass., May 23rd, 2018, to the Planning Board. First, thank you to Chairman Ritchie for the opportunity to write in my questions and commentary for the public hearing on Wednesday, May 30th. I cannot be there due to Quavon High School commencement-related events for my daughter. My questions and comments are all related to Article 22 of the Special Town Meeting Warrant, Commercial Marijuana Establishments, and are as follows. 22.1 states in part, no marijuana establishment shall impinge on any property owner's right to freedom of noise, odor, light pollution, or to the natural scenic historic and aesthetic qualities of their property. Comment, to me, while appearing all-encompassing, it feels overly broad in terms of what constitutes violations to the owner's rights. Who shall be the interpreter should a property owner claim an injured status? If the property owner disagrees with the interpreting authority, what appeals, process, or other remedy does the property owner have? This feels like whoever the authority is could be left with a full-time job just interpreting and adjudicating and enforcing this. 22.3 states in part, the enforcement authority of this bylaw shall be the Building Inspector and/or Planning Board. Comment, isn't the, a question, isn't the Hubbardston Police missing from the equation, this equation? It feels like they have an enforcement role, particularly if there is criminal behavior. Also, even though the Commonwealth has enacted state-level regulations to allow for these things, the Federal Justice Department, all the way up to the Attorney General Sessions, is not in agreement with state's rights to do this. So what happens if the Department of Justice and/or the ATF claim enforcement jurisdiction? 22.4.1 allows for outdoor cultivation up to 5,000 square feet by right in a residential zone district. As a property owner, I am very concerned about this, as the article is titled, Commercial Marijuana Establishments. How are we allowing for this in residential areas and by right? Do we allow the other commercial businesses, especially of regulated substances, to do business in residential districts? 22.4.2, same concerns as above. I feel a little bit better that this is at least requires, this at least requires a permit issued by the Planning Board, but the residential zoning allowance is still the issue. Also, what is the difference between a tier one and tier two establishment? 22.6 states in part, quote, must apply to the Planning Board for a special permit for marijuana establishment, close quote. Question, how does this reconcile with 22.4.1, which does not require a special permit but is allowed by right? Those are all my questions, my commentary is as such. At first, I was okay with this article, dependent on the answers to my questions above, because I thought that doing nothing was worse and that we were not allowed to enact a prohibition. However, after reading the recent article in The Telegram, where Holden enacted the outright prohibition, which is allowed under the law. While I think the work here is thoughtful and commendable, I feel I must speak up and say both as a property owner and parent that I do not support this article. I would much prefer to see an outright prohibition. Thanks again, I look forward to your responses. Best, Jamie Pitney. Thank you, Jamie. And let's take it from the top. Question is, who shall be the interpreter in reference to the property owner's rights to freedom of noise, odor, light pollution, or the natural scenic historic and aesthetic qualities of their property? And the question is, who shall be the interpreter should a property owner claim an injured status? If the property owner disagrees with the interpreting authority, what appeals, process, or other remedy does the property owner have? This feels like whoever the authority is could be left with a full-time job just interpreting, adjudicating, and enforcing this. And that's also a good question, as Deb raised a little bit earlier, and a, and a tough one to answer, partly because no one knows what the effect is gonna be. However, I would say that because it's a special permit, the opportunity for the public and abudders to have comments prior to the issuance of a permit is also a very important aspect of all of this bylaw, because without the special permit, you wouldn't have the opportunity to make a statement before it's issued.
But it's only for a special permit if it's tier two, tier one.
That's a tier two, correct.
Does require, require a special permit, so.
For tier one, they still have to go through quite a few hoops. I don't know what to tell you. That's, that may be one of the things that we overlooked in this bylaw. That's the answer I can come up with.
Well, that, that first statement that he was talking about is actually lifted from our Article 1 of the general bylaw, of the zoning bylaws. That is in all the bylaws, saying that you have the right to, you know, freedom of all those different things.
Yeah.
That's in the general bylaw. So the general by, the zoning bylaw, the enforcement officer is the building inspector who's the enforcement officer in town. In this case, if this is enacted, the Planning Board would also be able to enforce that. So the answer to Jamie's question is, the Planning Board and the Building Inspector be the enforcement officers for those things, but that, those things are also in the Article 1 of the zoning bylaws as well. I think they're in the general bylaws as well.
So for 22.3, Jamie asked a question about authority. Isn't Hubbardston Police missing from this equation? Feels like they have an enforcement role, particularly if there's criminal behavior, and this in no way restricts or negates the police authority for whatever criminal behavior takes place for, whatever activity.
We had, we had that in there. We originally had the police in there, but we took it out, I think we were advised to take it out by someone.
Well, they have no authority over zoning. That's primarily.
That was it, yeah.
The, the state law gives the authority to the, um, the Building Inspector, and the town can also give the Planning Board, but they, they have tremendous power when it comes to regulating this, and I'm sure they'll assert that. Even though the Commonwealth has enacted state-level regulations to allow for all these things, the Federal Justice Department, all the way up to Attorney General Sessions, is not in agreement with state rights to do this, so what happens if the DOJ or the ATF claim enforcement jurisdiction? A question none of us can answer, it's gonna be an interesting lawsuit and one I don't even wanna guess upon, so.
Above our pay grade?
Yeah, above our pay grade, that's one way to look at it. Yeah, good luck to whoever they're gonna fight over that one. 22.4.1 allows for outdoor cultivation, 5,000 square feet by right. As a property owner, I'm very concerned about this, as the article is titled, Commercial Marijuana Establishments. How are we allowing for this in residential areas and by right? Do we allow other commercial businesses, especially of regulated substances, to do business in residential districts? That's a great question, and it's one that, you know, we also considered. However, I think in the end, as Tom had mentioned earlier, the opportunity to regulate these, even in residential districts, was more important than allowing it to do it without any regulation, because if we didn't put anything in place, then anybody could do it anywhere. Is that right?
Yep, that's exactly right.
So that's at least a.
We could've had it in place that it was only allowed in commercial areas, correct? And, and not allowed them at all in residential areas?
Nope, it would have to go to a ballot if that was the case.
Oh, you said that was part of the state law, right?
It would be a prohibition.
Right?
So the, the answer is, you can do it, but you, you would have to have it go back to the ballot. So simply put, what happened was, we had the referendum vote, and towns voted yes or no, and then everybody put moratoriums on, and essentially banned it, just because of a town meeting vote. So to get towns to further consider it, the state put, put in regulations that said, if you're a yes town, you're gonna have to go and vote again to restrict it since you already voted. So they're, they're trying to, not loosen it up, that's the wrong word, but make people reconsider it. So you can put in, you can do a different bylaw that says it's prohibited in this area or banned outright, but you would have to have a town meeting vote and a ballot vote. So if this particular bylaw proposal is voted, is voted down, then you have to do, you can do another one, but it would require that town meeting and that election, and all of it would revert to state law when the moratorium ends on December 31st. So the answer is.
December 31st, 18?
Of 18.
If you don't have your act together by then, then it.
Then the moratorium that is currently in place in Hubbardston expires.
Just disappears.
And then you go to the state law, which is, it does not have much restriction at all.
And the reason, the answer to Jamie's question exactly, the 5,000 square feet, most, a lot, there we have a lot of small businesses in town, there's tons of them. The Planning Board likes to encourage small businesses, we think that fits the town character. You can run a small business in town if you only have, um, one, I think it's one employee's allowed, if you have one employee's allowed. So this gives people the opportunity to run a small business if they want, okay? Without that, I don't, I don't, I don't think it would be fair to people who want to start their own, own business, so. I mean, we could, we could be changed at the town meeting to require even that one to have its by special permit, but I think for 5,000 square feet, I don't think it's worth the work of doing a special permit. That's just my opinion, I mean, we, we struggle with this, to, to, to do what, what, we got, you always have to remember that people in this town voted for it, 54% of the people wanted it, so we're worried, more worried about not having this pass and trying to appeal as many people as possible, get something on the books. And then move forward from there. We could, if, if this passes and we have that in place, and someone, like I said to Ed, if someone wants to come forward with a, to ban it in town at another town meeting, we can do that, okay? But we need to get some minimal protection, the zoning in this town, before we move forward. I think that's the approach that we took. I mean, I personally revoked the ban it, but, I mean, a lot of people didn't, so I, we've had, we've heard from a lot of people saying they want to have it here, so.
So this is our attempt to do that regulation. Another question Jamie asked is, what is the difference between tier one and tier two? Tier one establishment is the allowable, uh, growing of marijuana up to 5,000 square feet. Tier two allows it from 5,001 to 10,000 square feet. Is that right, Tom?
Yep.
Okay. 22.6 states in part, must apply to the Planning Board's special permit for marijuana establishment. How does this reconcile with 22.4.1, which does not require a special permit but is allowed by right? Again, on that tier one, it's allowed by right for the reasons Tom had mentioned earlier, and that opportunity for people to grow it on a small scale for their own use.
No, no, no.
No?
For commercial.
For commercial, I'm sorry.
They're allowed to do, they're allowed six plants per, for that reason.
Right now, you're allowed it.
And of course, he is also basically stating that Holden has enacted a prohibition against this, and as Ryan just mentioned, the, the town of Hubbardston can also prohibit this if this article does not pass, but it would then go to another ballot question. So there is a mechanism, but we don't have that right now, because the majority of people in town voted for it, or 54% of the people voting voted for it, and therefore, this is the attempt to regulate it under the state law. So thank you, Jamie. And anybody else have any other questions before we move on to the next article?
Just to clarify that, Ben, what you said, even if this passes, we can still vote to ban it?
Right.
After.
After the town meeting?
After the town meeting, okay.
It's no different than any other zoning bylaw or general bylaw. You can always put it on another town meeting, it would just, just be an interesting or extra part of this, is if you do prohibit it, you have to, have the ballot, which you don't normally have to do with bylaw, of course, zoning bylaw changes. But it can always be brought up again and again and again. There's a cost and a weirdness to that, but.
Okay, the next article is 11, on page 19, which is, see if the vote, town will vote to amend Hubbardston bylaws with respect to marijuana establishments by making deletions and insertions into sections as follows. And these are basically housekeeping articles by changing the definitions, Article 2 definitions, by adding the definition, commission, and marijuana establishment. Those are definitions given to us by the state. And then changing to Article 4, use regulation, which is the addition of marijuana cultivation establishments to the use permitted by right in the residential district, which is Article 4.1. 4.2, uses a special permit in the residential districts, sections N and, section N, I'm sorry. Add the following to 4.3.1, use by special permit in town senate district, section C. And 4.5, use permitted by special permit in commercial districts, section G. All these are just basically adding the appropriate references to these articles if this article passes. If it doesn't pass, then these will become moot. All right. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the zoning bylaw articles that'll be sent to the town meeting next week.
Thanks.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Okay.
opposed, so voted. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That concludes the entertainment portion of the meeting.
We have to adjourn?
No, we do not. Because now, what we will be doing, if you'd like to stick around, we're deliberating to see if in fact the Planning Board will recommend the adoption or non-adoption of these proposed amendments to the town meeting next week.
As, as written in the.
As they're, absolutely, there are gonna be no changes, so. Or if there are a change, we can't make them until the town meeting, so.
Well, I didn't, I was listening to the public, I didn't hear a specific proposed change, am I wrong?
There were, there were comments and there were questions, and there were pros and cons, but there was no changes proposed except the outright.
Well, that's, that's a different thing, I meant to the article.
To the articles, no.
So there's no specific to consider, changing a word or changing a number?
No, and, and what we would have to do is, we would have to vote to accept that proposed change from the public and then propose that at town meeting under an amendment on the floor.
But I'm trying to, I'm trying to establish that there wasn't one.
There wasn't one, I heard that, so. Is there a motion to? Sorry, folks.
Motion to recommend.
Rescind the adoption of the proposed zoning bylaws to the town meeting on June the 5th.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
The vote? The vote? We will have a report ready for the town meeting and recommend adoption of everything we went over this evening.
I think we did that right?
Very questionable.
Motion to adjourn.